What's up everybody? ASMR towards men, my name is Max. And we're gonna be doing a little bit of accounting homework today. So, uh, pretty, I don't know if excited is the right word. But um, I needed to do this, I was doing this. And then I said, oh, I could record this. And I know a lot of you guys like these kinds of videos. You can also probably hear the rain outside right now. It that's the sound of um, after it went through all the thing, the troughs is the correct word. Now it's it's pouring out of it onto the ground uh below me. So I hope that you guys enjoy that sound. The garbage truck just passed by, but he's gone now. So uh, yeah, let's do this. I am on problem E dash, E thirteen dash twelve right now, so we're in chapter thirteen. And so yeah, this is um, I don't for you guys that are curious. Intermediate accounting two. I'm not gonna say a class at the university and I'll get be giving away homework answers online. But yeah, this is a working on calculations for early redemptions. On bonds. So callable bonds basically. And so that's the problem that I'm working on right now. I hope that you guys can hear me okay. And yeah, hope you enjoy, if you do, leave a thumbs up. Uh, so check out my Patreon, I'm making a barber shop video soon. Let's do some accounting guys. So what I first did was I made the initial entry. For the bond with cash, my discount and my bonds payable. And I'm doing this so I can find the carrying value of the bond. In order to determine if there was a loss on the bond when we called them. And so there was, I needed to record interest for five periods as well. So this is January second twenty twenty. The Bono Corporation issued the bonds. And interest payable annually on December thirty first. And we're amortizing the discount in straight line over the ten year period, but we only have to really worry about four years, I guess, in this problem. Nice part is, is that they did give us that the bond problem was straight line, so. That's kind of nice. But let's figure out the entries that we need to do for each. Interest payment and then we can kind of just extrapolate. So every part of an interest payment will have an interest expense, obviously. And the value for the interest expense. Is going to be. Well, let's see. It's not gonna be our market rate. Our stated right, I mean, I think we actually have to do. Cause we already have the discount. And interest expense will also have our discount. On bonds payable. That will be amortized. And then we'll also have um, a cash component to it. And the cash component is the easiest to figure out, so I usually like to do that part first. And so if you look at the problems as we issued these, or the corporation issued the bonds at one point five million. And they were ten percent bonds. Apologize for my roommate. He's doing something out there. So that means that our interest cash component is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that would obviously be a credit to cash because we're paying it. And so now we need to figure out the um, oh, this is actually easy. We figure out the interest expense component by figuring out our discount on bonds payable, or so that's one way we can do it. So we already have our broad discount on bonds payable. But because this is using the straight line method, it's pretty easy. We can just figure out how much we need to amortize each uh interest period. Which is four thousand five hundred. And we can just add that to our cash amount for the interest payment. Which is a hundred and fifty four thousand five hundred. So. Uh, not too bad. And looking at this, that does make sense. Discount on it, so we're having to pay more interest expense. So I have this really good orange soda. Sometimes I like to have a little drink next to me while I'm doing my accounting problems or just homework in general, really. Okay. So that was only for one of the entries that we need to do. And we need to do this entry, let's figure this out. So we don't need to do it the first time, we've only entered the second time, which would be in twenty one, only to do it in twenty two, twenty three, twenty four. And on twenty five technically to get the carrying value, so only need to do this five times. And so instead of writing all of these entries out, what we'll do instead is we'll just take five times the discount on um, bonds payable that will amortize those five times. So five times forty five zero zero. So we get twenty two thousand five hundred. So that's pretty nice. That's that's the amount of discount that we amortize over the life. And um. I believe that's actually perfectly half of the discount, yeah, it is. So that's nice, I guess. So now we need to figure out the carrying value. And if I can remember correctly, the carrying value is just the face value of the bonds, which would be the amount in bonds payable. So one point five million minus the unamortized discount, which at this point would be the twenty two thousand five hundred. Equals. One million four hundred and seventy seven five hundred. So that's technically the carrying value of the bonds. And that's important because we need this in our calculation for if there's a loss or not. So if we look in the problem, when we purchase, when we repurchase these bonds. They're callable at one hundred and one, which means that we need to take one, one point zero one times the face value of the bonds, which is that uh, one point five million figure we're talking about. And so the value that we're able to purchase these back at is one million five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And I'm trying to remember the calculation exactly for. The whether to, except believe it's negative you record. Let's do this. One, five, one, five, zero, zero, zero. I think I have a problem on this, but my intuition, I think is gonna be right. Book value, I care, book value, I care. So we subtract the book value or rather the carrying value from the retirement price. And that will give us our loss in this case, because the retirement price is greater than the book value. So that is thirty. That was cool. So we had a loss of thirty seven thousand five hundred. And I think that's the end of that problem. Bonds, so we calculate the amount of loss and then we also need to make the journal entry. So the journal entry for this, it's gonna be hard for me to remember. I do know a couple of the components. So one component is that we obviously need to clear out our bonds payable. And that amount would be a debit to the full face value because we can't have anything left in there. Another amount that we'll need to clear out is our discount on bonds payable. And so we will need to credit that amount for, oh, there'll also be a cash component, huh? Let's see, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to figure this out to make sure it'll work. Okay, I'll maybe, let me just do this. I'll write the discount, but then that'll also be greater. Oh, because there's that loss, yeah, so we have to debit the loss. Four thirty seven thousand five hundred, that's, that's the number that I was not thinking of. And then we still have the um, the discount that we, that we left unamortized. And that amounts to, in this case, it just happens to be the same. Twenty two thousand five hundred number. And then we have the cash payment for the retirement of the bonds. Of um, one million five hundred and fifteen thousand. But that's pretty easy. So just making sure if I think seven, all those numbers line up, and they do. So we're good, and it looks like we did the problem correct, so. Another one down. Okay. Next up is thirteen point thirteen. I never understood why thirteen was an unlucky number, like I know, don't they not have like thirteen? On like a cruise ship or something that like, like the elevator doesn't go to level thirteen, it just goes to fourteen or something, maybe I'm a crazy person, but I don't think they do. Which is funny because it's like, oh, well, you like, there's still like a level thirteen. I don't know. Maybe one of you guys don't know what I'm talking about. Okay, so thirteen dash thirteen is the next problem. And Matt Perry Incorporated had outstanding six million of eleven percent bonds interest payable July thirty first. Okay, yada, yada, yada. July first, it issued, okay, so some new bonds. A portion of proceeds were used to call the eleven percent bonds. With an unamortized discount at one oh two obvious for. Okay, so prepare the journal entries necessary to record the issue of the new bonds. And their funding, or rather the calling of the old bonds. So this actually isn't too bad, it says a lot, but it's not that bad of a problem. So we'll just start with what I think is gonna be the simpler part of the problem. Which is recording the new bonds that we'll have purchased, or I guess distributed. So on July first, we issue nine million of these ten percent bonds fifteen, and we issued them at ninety eight, so we issued them at a discount. So what I like to do first is calculate the amount of cash that we'll be getting. So we'll be getting a cash equivalent of eight million eight hundred and twenty thousand. And we will have a discount on that obviously, because it's less than the face value. On BP of, let's see, that amount minus the face value, which happens to be nine million. So we have a discount of a hundred and eighty thousand. And another component of this initial entry is obviously we need to record bonds payable. At the face value of the bonds that we distributed. Great. Where is that problem? There it is. Okay, so that was recording the initial entry and um, let's see, a portion of the proceeds that was really, and this problem is semi-connected, but I think it gives us the amount, the with unamortized discount. Of a hundred and twenty thousand, so that's very nice of them that they give us that. Because it means that we, I don't think we necessarily have to calculate a lot of things. But what we should do is calculate whether or not there was a loss, and that's where we use that hundred and twenty thousand unamortized discount. And that's how we get the carrying value of the bonds. So this isn't bad at all. I don't think, unless I'm doing it wrong, but I don't think I am. So let's calculate that first, so the selling price or requisition price of the bonds was stated at one of two. So let's take the initial face value. Six million. So requisition price is six million one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Minus the carrying value, and the carrying value is just that six million. And then you subtract the unamortized discount, or I believe you also, you, or you add the unamortized premium. But this is the discount problem, so we won't worry about that. Just add or subtract a hundred and twenty thousand. Subtract five million eight hundred and eighty eight, oops. Eight hundred thousand. And we'll get the loss. We have a loss of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Yeah, okay. So moving on, now that we have our loss calculated, we can go ahead and create the second journal entry for the refund of the bonds. And this is nearly identical to the process that we did before. In fact, it probably will be identical because it is a bond problem after all. So, and they did get a loss. So the first thing that we'll do is close out the bonds payable account for the six million that we had initially entered into the system. If you remember, we also have to record. Also have to record a loss. Um, the loss that we calculated at two hundred and forty thousand. So that sets us up quite nicely to release the rest of the discount on bonds. And that discount was how we calculated our carrying value. And that's value one hundred and twenty thousand. After we release the discount, we'll also need to disperse cash for the requisition of the bonds. And the cash will total six million one hundred and twenty thousand. And if you do the math, those both equal, so we're good. So that's problem thirteen, I believe is all of it. Refunding of the bonds, great. So those are, we're done with the exercises now. Now we'll move on to the practice problems. And so. They give us the second part of the bond problem. This time they want us to construct the amortization tables where applicable. But we should be able to do it without one. You'll still do the math, it'll just be, you know. I mean, we can, we can make an amortization table that actually might be easier because, well, it depends how many entries we're doing, but let's see. So. Ti- Titania Company. Titania? I don't know. Whoever they are sold four hundred thousand dollars worth of twelve percent bonds on June first. Which pay interest December first and June first. The due date of bonds is twenty twenty five on June first. They yield ten percent. And on October first twenty twenty six, she buys back a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of bonds. For one hundred and twenty six thousand, give entries, okay, so we're gonna have to make the entries anyways, let's just not even use an amortization table. And I believe we're using effective. Yes, we're using effective interest method here. So that'll be fun. But um, yeah. Difference between effective interest method and the straight line method that we're using on there. Is that the effective interest method takes into account present value concepts. And so there's um, there's a little more emphasis on, you know, time value of money. So that's just one more thing that we have to take account into the problem, but you'll see it's actually not that bad. Um, as long as you keep running total of a couple of things. So we need to give all of the entries. So we'll start with the initial disbursements of the bonds. So they tell us that we sold the bonds, or we sell four hundred thousand dollars worth of twelve percent bonds. Pay interest on those dates, the bonds yield ten percent. So there is. Let's see, that's the market rate, so the stated rate is greater than the market rate, so they should sell at a premium. I think. Twelve percent bonds. I don't, I'm not sure how to calculate that um. The difference though, not the difference like the, the bond amount. If I don't have. We'll just start diving into the problem, so the disbursements slash the initial entry. Um, one thing that we'll obviously be getting is cash. And then there will also be a bonds payable component. And obviously also a discount or a premium on bonds payable component. I do know the bonds payable, and it's always just gonna be the face value of four hundred thousand. So let's try and reason our way through this. If the stated rate is greater than the market rate, then we will be selling these bonds at a premium. So that means that we'll have a premium. On bonds payable up here. And then cash value will be greater because of it. Twelve percent, twelve percent. So now I struggle to find the. Oh, I see. I see, so we actually need to use one of our present value tables. And the way that we define the present value, the present value of the bond is gonna be the amount of cash we receive. The way that we do this is we take the number that we will pay back, the investors or creditors when we um, call the bond or whatever, or release it at the end of its life. Which happens to be the face value, or which is the face value of four hundred thousand dollars. And we have to time that, times that by a present value factor. Which is a single sum factor. Where the interest rate or the I. I think it's that you use the market rate. So it's, and so it's semi-annual payments, so we have to split the market rate in two, market rate is ten percent, I is five percent. And then, and the number of periods of interest that we have. Which would be. Sorry, I'm kinda just blanked out there. So let's see, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight. So you have one in twenty five, two in twenty six, three in twenty s- or sorry, two in twenty seven. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's the, the amounts of interest, but then we'll also have that buyback of a hundred and twenty thousand. Which to be entirely honest, I don't know the exact mechanics of that, but we'll figure it out. Maybe, or I'll just figure it out in class tomorrow. Yeah. So I don't actually know what this present value factor is. And I hate figuring these present value factors out so much. But we'll do it, um, another important component is this twelve percent of the four hundred thousand. So that's the uh, cash that we disburse. Every payment. And that also needs to be taken into account because it's cash flow. But that's the present value factor of an, I think is an ordinary annuity. Um, and then you use the same interest rate of point five, and then for the number. I guess. I guess we actually have to do the, the number of periods throughout the entirety of the bond. So for example. Let's see, so this one, twenty five, so how many years is that? It's one, two, that's four years, right? Yeah, it's four years, so I think there's eight payments. Okay, so we can do this, it just sucks and it's my least favorite thing in the world, but we can do it. Get my calculator in here. We can copy down. Present value one, here we go, oh, that's too big of a factor though. Present value in order to your annuity, okay, we'll have to come back to here anyways, so. It's five percent for eight periods, which is nine point five four nine one one. And then the present value, we need the present value of one, present value of a single sum right here. And that is point six seven six eight four. Now we can go back, now that we have those factors. And multiply it by point six seven six eight four for the cash payment at the end of the bond. And then for eight zero 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 times nine point five four nine one one. For the installment portion of the bond. For the installment portion of bond. So the cash that we get, that seems. Unreasonably high. That seems really, really high. You know what? The homework is for completion, so. We'll just roll with it for now. The number that I got, if you're curious. Is seven hundred and twenty nine thousand. And then three, and so our premium is gonna be enormous. It's a premium of three hundred and twenty nine. Yeah, this does not seem right because the premium is nearly the size of the bond payable itself. But I'm not gonna ask any questions. It's not on the homework, right? I honestly, I really hope that on the test they just give us the present value factors or like a list of us. List of them to choose from. Because I think she actually might be using different factors than me. Or maybe I just did, I might have done the math wrong also, which is also, you know, a possibility. Okay. Also haven't done this partial buyback that they're talking about in here, which happens twenty six, so. We'll have full interest, full interest or two full interest payments. Let's go ahead and record those. So the first interest payment, full interest payment will come on December first. And that. Because we're using effective interest is gonna be a little different than before. So we have that and then we'll we'll need to amortize the premium. Bonds payable. And then we'll also, there will be the cash component and the cash component is always simple to figure out. Because it's simply um. The forty eight thousand that we'd calculated earlier. And so now we just need to figure out the interest expense and the premium bonds payable. And the way that we do that is the interest expense is also pretty easy, you just take the. By extension, the bonds payable is pretty easy as well. Or the premium bonds payable. You take the four hundred thousand and um so that's that's the total face value of the bonds, right? You multiply that by the current market rate, which is our ten percent. And then you have to multiply it by point five because we get interest payments semi-annually. And the number is twenty thousand. And so our premium would be a whopping twenty eight thousand, so it's. I wonder, I I wonder if I did the math right, it just just does not seem right to me. I don't know, we haven't really covered this a lot in class yet, so. And then we have, so that was the December first payment, but we also need the the following year's June first payment. And that'll follow a similar vein thought. But remember, because we're using the effective interest method, it'll change, right, so. Oh, I actually might have done that wrong. Wait, did I? Six plus zero. I think it's that first one, right? Bond premium payable. Did I? Premium, okay. So that's why the number didn't feel right. I I still do believe that I got my my premium on bonds payable wrong. But I really am at the point in the problem where it's completion. I've already spent too much time on this because I have more homework to do today. That will just, we'll fix this number. But if we encounter more errors, then it'll probably just make more sense to. Just thug it out, you know what I'm saying? So I'm gonna recalculate the interest payment. And this actually is probably gonna make a lot more sense than of course the problem, but. Point, oh, what's the percent? I think it's point five, I guess. Yeah, that does not make any sense. So. I'm gonna be honest, guys. I. A little confused on this one. So and I don't wanna take a ton of time on it because I know that there's gonna be more practice problems. That I have to do in here after this. And so I'm just gonna keep moving forward with this problem, even though I do think that is incorrect. But I can still, I I can salvage, I can salvage it to a degree. By doing this by, this bys. Uh I see, I don't even know that entry yet, we haven't learned that one. So let's see, June first, that's twenty six. Yeah, June five, twenty six. Oh, we need another year. We need another year, gosh dang it, okay. Twenty six. Oh, this is. This is disheartening for me. I hate. I. A bit of a perfectionist when it comes to, even though the the homework is completion. You know, you obviously you like to have it right, I mean, who doesn't? Twenty six and then we have June twenty seven. Or June first twenty twenty seven. When do those? Oh, I'm such a moron, we actually didn't need either of those. Twenty six, twenty six. Give entries through, okay, so really we just need, oh my gosh, oh, that's gonna be. That's gonna be brutal. So right here we have the October. On October first, um she buys back that hundred and twenty six, so. She buys it back, so there's a loss, that one's pretty easy, it's just six thousand. But then there's also the component of decreasing her bonds payable by a hundred and twenty thousand. And then obviously there's a cash payment of a hundred and twenty six thousand. I'm just flying through this, my hair's on fire. So. See, the the crappy part about that is on that payment, you should also technically be paying interest. Um or at least calculating it correctly. Because after that, your effective interest rate is gonna change because there'll be a different um. Like there'll be a different amortized amount. This is, this is, this is bad. Oh, my camera, guys, my camera died, sorry, guys. Um thank you so much for watching, this last problem is a bit of a shit show for me. But I'm gonna get it figured out off camera. Again, thank you so much for watching. If you did enjoy, please leave a big thumbs up, I would appreciate it and I'll see you in the next one.